Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call the Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee to order. With me is Councilwoman Bill Gates and Councilwoman Kate Gallego. And I don't know if Laura joined us. Okay. But we will go ahead. And first item of the approval, review and approval of the March 25 minutes.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay. Without further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now for the April 1 minutes.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item three is for information only. I don't know if anybody has any questions. Okay. Item four is for consent. It's the October 2015 Recommended Bus Changes.
Move approval?
Move second, but with the comments that I hope next time we can accommodate the data we collected through Reinvent Phoenix in bus changes. Can I make comments on consent items?
Yeah, you can.
Okay.
Go to the chair, you can, it's okay.
Thank you. Powerful chair, we're very lucky.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item five is for information, discussion, and possible action. It is the Ellen MacArthur Foundation. John?
Madam Chair, John Trujillo's not here today, I don't think. And so Ginger Spencer and Mark Cartman and Raj from ASU are gonna talk. This is a follow-up to the presentation we did last time, a piece of the presentation that you asked for more information on. And so that information's in your packet. But Ginger has a very brief presentation just to kinda highlight the answers to the questions that you all had at the last Subcommittee. And then we have a revised recommendation for you based upon your input last time about doing a one-year membership, or one year at a time as opposed to doing it three in one lump. So Ginger, why don't you pick it up?
All right, thank you, Rick. Chairwoman Williams and members of the Subcommittee, thank you for this opportunity to come to you to present the requests for the Ellen MacArthur Foundation membership. Ellen MacArthur Foundation, just to provide a little bit of background on the organization, was founded in 2010. And in 2013, they launched their Circular Economy 100 membership. So basically, the foundation, what they're formed on is the whole premise of building and accelerating circular economies on a global scale. And so if we go back to the presentation that John did a couple of months ago where we talked about a linear economy, it's basically, we're used to taking items, right? We use them, and then when we're done with them, we throw them away, and they end up in the landfill. So it's the, basically, your take, make, and waste model. Well, in a circular economy, what we're doing is we're taking those items and we're repurposing them through recycling, remanufacturing, recovering those items, so basically using it for its best use. So that's why we're here to talk about circular economy. And then also, just a little bit of the organization, the funding for it, it's a charity organization, but it was funded through a partnership with Cisco, Philips, Renault, Kingfisher, and Unilever, those organizations. So we're gonna talk about some of the membership benefits. So the city of Phoenix has been invited to become a member, along with 90-plus companies and organizations throughout the world, to be a member of the circular economy. It's by invitation only, and what they are doing is they're reaching out to organizations that they feel are on the leading edge of building circular economies. So from a membership standpoint, for what it's, they're asking for is $50,000 over a three-year commitment. But we did follow-up based on the recommendations that we got from the Subcommittee to find out if they would be okay with us doing it on a one-year basis. So if we're approved for one year worth of funding, that's what we do. And then we would come back in year two and year three. And if we were approved in those subsequent years, then we would move forward. If not, we would end there. But I do wanna talk about the benefits of the membership. So innovation platform, it basically gives us an access to best practices from other businesses, Fortune 500 companies, as well as other governments that are using this throughout the world, and innovators. So that's one of the things, is access to best practices. The other thing is global leader. Again, as I stated, this is by invitation only, and they do recognize Phoenix as being a leader in the global economy with all the things that we're doing down at the Resource Innovation Campus. So this will give us an opportunity to learn from others, as well as them to learn, giving others an opportunity to learn from Phoenix. And when we came before you before, we had talked about the cities that they had reached out to. So the cities that are current members are mostly cities that are in, or countries that are in Europe. So right now, they have Catalonia, who's a member from Spain. There's another organization, CD2E, which is in northern France. There's the Danish Business Authority in Denmark, Scotland, Taiwanese company, and our, the Taiwan Network, excuse me, Circular Economy Network. Yes.
Counselor?
And Madam Chair, question on that. So all those entities, then, they all paid $50,000?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Yep, they have all paid in and are current members. And so they, in the U.S., they have reached out to, and there's one other company, there's Harlem Lear, that's a mouthful, in the Netherlands, and they are one of the more recent members to join, the CE 100. In the U.S., they have reached out to the city of Phoenix, Palo Alto, and New York. So we are all, basically, have been working with them and with our councils, basically considering to be members of the organization. Also, return on investment. Basically, by accessing these organizations and companies, these Fortune 500 companies, there is one member that's currently a part of the CE 100, and that's the Circular Econ, I'm sorry, the Closed Loop Fund. And Mark Cartman's gonna talk about that organization in just a little bit. But return on investment, what we would like to do is bring at least a million-dollar investment to the city of Phoenix at our Resource Innovation Campus through our, by belonging to this organization. And so Closed Loop Fund is an organization that wants to help cities build circular economies, and they're willing to come forward with zero base interest loans to do so. And so these are the companies that we would have access to. Also, we want to be able, yes.
Ginger, when you say loans, loans to the city, or loans to innovative new companies?
Chairwoman Williams, it would be both. Loans to the city, if we choose, at our Resource Innovation Campus, as well as to companies that are interested in relocating there.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanna make sure that zero-based, because that was one of the key pieces that I was educated on.
Yes. For the city, it would be zero-based.
Okay.
And for companies, it could be zero-based or low-market rates.
And it's, it's an incentive to draw them to Phoenix or create innovation?
That is correct. Chairwoman Williams and Councilwoman Pastor, that is correct.
Okay.
Okay. And, and also too, we would like to identify a best practice that we, from companies that belong to the CE 100, that we could apply here in Phoenix. So example, like I said, there's the CD2E from France. London has found a way, well, that's England, but, sorry, wrong example. London, England, they've found a way to basically recycle textiles through their recycling program. And so it's been in place. And so we would like to work with those organizations to be able to do so, do something like that here in Phoenix. So it's giving us quick and easy access to other companies that are doing these sorts of things. And then lastly, I think I talked on this, but national, international exposure to company and investors. So this is a very exciting time for us in Phoenix, and we're honored that they've reached out to us to ask that we belong to this organization. So Mark's gonna talk about the companies.
And it's quite a remarkable list of organizations that are, that are on here. Certainly, you see many of them. And the one thing that's really unique about this is it's pretty remarkable in the sustainability world to actually think that these organizations are recognizing the incredible waste of actually producing and acquiring materials from all of our producing products, giving them to consumers who just bury them in a landfill. The state of Georgia did a study, and they actually found they spend $100 million bearing $300 million worth of waste that could be recycled and actually has that value. So they're, they're just recognizing. Procter &amp; Gamble is, of course, significant, spends tens of billions in acquiring materials and is actually saying, what is the business model to actually get some of those materials back? And how can they partner with cities to even get some of those materials back? So really interesting conversations, and it's great being at the forefront of that conversation. Procter &amp; Gamble, for example, they actually have put in, they've actually brought 30, hired 30 people and actually assigned them to 30 of their, 70 of their facilities, and are saving $2 billion a year from going to zero waste, just by using all their waste now as raw materials within their actual input process. So pretty significant seeing these organizations recognize. And I would say the most significant part of this is that how we as a city can say, well, how can we ever get to zero waste? People are always gonna wanna throw out garbage. But it's these organizations that actually will start manufacturing, producing goods that are 100% recyclable. So it's really dependent on them. So as we, we can actually achieve our goals as these organizations start saying, we're our goal now and commitments are to actually go 100% recycling. I really see in conversations we've had with them to start doing pilots here and studies here, and they're very interested in our Resource Innovation Campus and talking about it in the Closed Loop Fund. I did wanna mention it, and certainly, yeah, I think Ginger covered most of the interesting stuff about it, but essentially, yeah, it is, it is the 10 largest of the Closed Loop Fund members, actually decided to put, all put in $100 million, 'cause they say the only way this is ever gonna happen is if we provide this loan pool to cities and entrepreneurs in order to figure out how to recover some of these materials that can come back into the organization. So they recognize they themselves committed, made a commitment last year, and established this fund to be used, and it's part of this foundation, that was the founding members of this particular Closed Loop Fund, so pretty significant.
Madam Chair, and just to follow up on that then, so is it your belief that if we do not become a member of this foundation, that that, that capital would not be available to the city of Phoenix?
We could, we certainly could apply, as any city could apply to this Closed Loop Fund. I think that it would, and I don't even wanna characterize it that, you know, it puts us in better stead, but it does, we are in conversations, and they're really clear. The one thing about it is we are at the forefront, and actually, as I talk to many of these organizations, they, they are aware, oh, the city of Phoenix, yeah, you're planning on using some of our Closed Loop Fund, and they're anxious for us to apply. So it is just putting us at the forefront of their minds, and also in many other conversations about it. So I think it's a pretty significant partnership, as much as a membership, within this organization. So pretty significant. And so I've talked about cities, and we've talked about organizations, and I think Raj, you can kinda highlight, I guess, what's happening in the university sector.
Thanks, Mark. Raj Butch with Arizona State University. So the pioneer universities, what Ellen MacArthur, other than just partnering with private sector and regions, municipalities, they wanna invite up to 10 universities to become educational and research partners. So you see the first six they've invited and have become members. ASU's in the process of finally finalizing the paperwork and becoming a member. Four of those are in Europe. The Rochester Institute of Technology is in New York, so between our IT and ASU are the first two U.S. universities to become members. Although there's no fee to join Ellen MacArthur from a university perspective, they do expect universities to advance research, education, and application of circular economy. And so as part of that, ASU has committed to building professional undergraduate and graduate certification programs that will put, put out in the next 12 months for professional and then, and then go into the second and third year for the undergrad and graduate certifications. So we're doing that. And basically, this will then advance ASU as a leader in circular economy. It'll tie in with what Phoenix is already doing with Risen and Reimagine and Resource Innovation Campus, and will be the first region in the world where a pioneer university is housed within the region. And that's the Pioneer University background. Ginger?
All righty. So we're here today to request Subcommittee approval to recommend that we could go forward with applying for a one-year membership with the Circular Economy 100 through the Ellen MacArthur Foundation.
Ginger, if this is approved today, and, you know, I am supportive of this, I think it's a real feather in our cap to be selected, and the good work you're doing is being recognized not only nationally but globally, so. But as you come up with projects, and you talk about applying for funds or working with a company, are you going to bring them back individually to the Subcommittee so that we know what's going on?
Yes, we will.
And can approve applications or?
Yes. Chairwoman Williams, we will bring all those items forward for Subcommittee and full council approval.
Okay, thank you. Comments? Motion? Councilman Gates?
Yeah. Madam Chair, I will move that we adopt the recommendation from staff to do a one-year membership with the Ellen MacArthur Foundation. And then I had some comments.
Go ahead. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second.
Thank you. I wanna thank staff for going and looking at the three years, that was, that was a pretty big reach for me. This is a group I don't know that much about. You guys have done a great job of educating us. I like the one year where we can see after a year if we're getting a good bang for our buck. I'm impressed by the private entities that are involved, some very large corporations. There's sensitivity on this council among some of us as it relates to memberships, but I think this is one that I believe, I've made the motion, I'll be supporting it, 'cause I think there will be a big bang for the buck, but if there's not, after a year, we'll have an opportunity to reassess. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome. Any other comments? Councilwoman?
Thank you. I think it's significant that the loan fund is so large, so you can really do something when you can get a project of $5 million or more. There's been many loan funds that have been very successful, but with much smaller capitals available, and so that's gonna allow us, 'cause some of these are real barriers to entry. I mean, there are problems that haven't been solved yet because there's some real investment required to solve them, so that's very exciting. And there were several of the companies that are involved that have local footprints, perhaps a particular interest to this Subcommittee might be Veolia. So I'd be interested in knowing what those companies are doing, and maybe we have sustainability efforts that are already happening that we ought to be highlighting within the city of Phoenix.
Chairwoman Williams and Councilwoman Gallego, you are correct. We would like to work with these companies to see if they would be interested in relocating to our campus, our Resource Innovation Campus. We were recently at an event where Veolia was their, their CEO, and he did a presentation, and I may have it here. But basically, they were making these plastic chips, and they made it from, I'll just say, wastewater treatment plant material.
Very diplomatic.
And so they have developed technology where they're able to take that and make it into plastics.
Is that a payment token?
You know what? This was a chip that he gave us. But poker chip, but, plastic.
There's all kinds of chips.
Visual, all kinds of chips.
So you're saying it's a gamble to go forward with this?
No, no, no.
Just to highlight what that technology is, it's actually an engineered bacteria that actually eats away at the waste and produces a bioproduct of plastics as it's waste, so that can be gathered up after. So really transforming truly waste into a usable product is quite, quite amazing.
So it's plastics in vehicles, or what else besides gambling can we?
Oh, it could be any, any use of the plastics, so any type of materials and products that are produced with plastics, so.
So exciting things are happening.
All right, we have a motion. Any further comments? Harry Dunn, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We look forward to hearing how you proceed and what's going on.
Thank you.
Next item is transforming trash into resources.
And Ginger is gonna stay here, Madam Chair, and along with her will be Chris Mackey and Gretchen Wolf, who've worked very hard. Is Gretchen coming up too, or no? Okay, good. And this is, you all will recall, we talked to you in the spring about an RFP and a call for innovators, and this is a report back today. We don't have any action proposed today, that will come after the summer, but we wanted to give you what we view as a very exciting update in terms of the response we've received.
Great. Thank you, Rick. Chairwoman Williams and members of the Subcommittee, as Rick stated, this is a very exciting time for us in the Public Works Department and with our recent partnership with the Community and Economic Development Department. So we're here to provide the update on the results that we received on our transforming trash into resources, RFP, as well as our Reimagine Phoenix Call for Innovators. And this is all part of our Reimagine Phoenix initiative in the city of Phoenix, approved by the mayor and city council, for us to achieve a 40% diversion rate by the year 2020. So all of the proposals that we're gonna talk about are gonna help us get towards reaching that goal. So the procurement timeline, we came back in February requesting approval to go out and issue the RFP as well as a CFI. And basically, we did that in early March, and we gave them a one-month deadline, basically, to respond to the RFP and the CFI. So it was a very quick turnaround, but we've got some really good responses to the RFP and lots of interest for the CFI on a local, national, and international basis. So transforming trash, RFP, basically, this is looking at our items that are difficult to recycle, and a lot of times, that may end up in the landfill. And Gretchen Wolf likes to refer to these items as our problem children. So they're non-rechargeable batteries, carpeting, carpet foam, furniture, latex, matrix, palm fronds, residential food waste, and anything else that individuals thought of. For example, palm fronds. We get a lot of palm fronds out at our transfer station, and the difficulty with them is with the leaves, it jams and messes up our equipment. So it's very costly, and it just doesn't work in our current composting program. So that's some of the things that we're looking at. So overall, with the RFP, we received eight responsive proposals. And of the eight responsive proposals in those categories, we had an evaluation committee, and they are recommending that we move forward with negotiations with three companies at this time. So I'll talk about those a little bit. But I would like to recognize our evaluation panel and to thank them for their work on this. So we had Arizona State University, we had Dr. Tom Seeger, who is over the engineering program there in sustainability. We had Jamie Bohan from Republic Services, one of our partners, and she's over there sustainability initiatives. We partnered with Community and Economic Development, and we had Diane Nakagawa, Deputy Director there. And then we had Ron Serio, Assistant Public Works Director from our Water Department, because a lot of these proposals have to do with water, wastewater. And then we had Chuck Hamstra, who is our Deputy Director and oversees our landfill and disposal and diversion operations. So we had a very, really, really good evaluation panel. So for the three proposals that the Committee recommended that we move forward on, the first is carpeting and carpet foam. Planet Recycling was the top proposer in that category. And what they are recommending, I'm trying to go off my memory here, is, but what they would like to do is to take our carpet and our carpet foam. What we found out is almost 100% of our carpet foam is recyclable. When it comes to carpet, about 60% of carpet is recyclable. So they want to take our carpet and carpet foam, they would pick it up from our transfer stations, and then basically, they would take it to their facility, and then they would basically test to see what's recyclable, what isn't. And what's recyclable, then they would basically repurpose it. And then what isn't recyclable, then they would like to return back to our transfer stations. That would be the 40%. We, right now, don't have a way of testing what's recyclable and what isn't, but this company does. So by doing this, we're estimating that we would be able to divert about 540 tons of carpet and carpet foam per year by doing this.
Ginger, are, I'm curious on money.
Yes.
I hope that somehow in this evaluation, that, I don't know if they're paying us, you're paying them, but I would hate to see any cost increase. It's cheaper to have it delivered to them or whatever and bring it back, just by the fact it's that much less tonnage you have to drive to the landfill, but I'd like to see some actual figures on it.
Yes, and that's why we want to negotiate with these companies. Some, in their proposals, it was a net zero cost. Basically, they wanted to come and take our items for free. In some other cases, they have, they'll have equipment cost needs, there may be some staffing needs. So in those cases, there was a net cost to those proposals. And so that's why we wanna go and negotiate with them. In addition to the net costs, we need to work with our staff to figure out how some of these proposals will work out operationally. So that's why we're coming forward today with just an update on where we're at, and then we're gonna work with them on the negotiations through the summer, and then come back first thing in the fall with the actual recommendations, with the best proposals.
Just to supplement, supplement that answer a little bit, sometimes, in the end, we may come back, or I should say they, 'cause I won't be here, may come back with something that does have a net cost on a, on a regular basis to it, but there are cost avoidances for the city, such as having to build out another landfill cell, or wear and tear, you know, more wear and tear on our equipment. So one of the things Ginger and the staff are trying to do is try to better quantify those things, so you can sort of think about them from a monetary standpoint, even if they're not direct cash flow, day in and day out savings, so that you really understand that, that there may be even long-term dollar savings from something that might cost, in the short term, a little bit, a little bit of money. But we, we agree with you. We obviously don't want to, I mean, recycling and repurposing is very, very important to us, and at times, there may be reasons why you do wanna pay a little more for that, just because of the external effects of saving the environment. But, but that's really why we're not here today with a recommendation, because we really wanna spend some more time drilling down on the cost avoidances, on the, on the revenue side of it, and they're still negotiating with these proposers.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. Just to follow up to that too, I mean, like for carpets, for example, you know, people may be confused about whether that's recyclable or not. So maybe another piece of that equation could be that the successful bidders participate somehow, make a contribution towards additional recycling education, 'cause if they can encourage people to recycle more, then that's more revenue for them, and obviously, that's less material that has to go to the landfill for us.
That is correct. Okay. The next category is mattresses. So the problem with mattresses is they are big and they are bulky, and a lot of times, people don't know what to do with them. They can pick them up for bulk trash pickup, but a lot of times, we find them in alleys or places where, with illegal dumping. And so they are huge, and a lot of times, they'll end up in the landfill. They don't decompose easily, you see the photo right there. So Goodwill of Central Arizona was a top-ranked proposer in this category. And what they wanna do is they would set up a bin where we would put, our staff would put the mattresses that we get there at the transfer station. They would basically transport them to their facility, which is closely located to our 27th Avenue transfer station, and they would basically disassemble the mattresses. So the metal and the wood will be recycled. The actual fabric itself can be repurposed into carpet foam. Yes. And so basically, repurposing the mattresses. But this is intensive, labor-intensive process to do this. And then there is equipment required just to be able to recycle the metal as well, to compact it and that sort of thing. But that is the proposal there, and by doing this, we would divert an estimated 1,400 tons per year, so 1,400 tons per year by doing this proposal.
That's a good.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna channel Tom Simplot here for a moment, and I know bedbugs was a big issue a few years ago. So I'm just making sure that, you know, whoever the successful bidder is here will make sure that we, we're not recycling bedbugs in our economy here through this process, 'cause I'm thinking that might be why they're in the alley or wherever they're at.
Councilman Gates, correct. You are correct. We don't want the liability, and I'm sure they don't as well, so to be able to deal with that as well, and make sure that the fabric is sanitized very well, so. Okay. But thank you, we'll, we'll note that in our negotiations.
And so we don't have to see any bedbugs, right, now that we've addressed that? For anyone who is around, we, yeah, you remember that? Okay, good.
I have a question regarding, just the recycling. What type of tests does it go through or procedures in order to know that this is recyclable? Because I'm thinking of a number of other things in my mind as to some of the things that could happen. So I'm curious.
So Gretchen Wolf will respond to that.
So when we came up with the list for the RFP, we actually talked with the folks in the solid waste operations to identify what are those items that are causing challenges? What are the items that we think we could readily pull out of the waste stream to provide to someone who can repurpose it? So this was a first attempt, and it is a pilot program. We could find out that some of these are wildly successful, and we could do another RFP for other types of items. We may find that some people were willing to try something new and it didn't work, but we have gained that knowledge of how we can change things in the future.
And Councilwoman Pastor, so what we could also do is work with Goodwill to have a better understanding of that process, and then when we come a better understanding of that process, and then when we come back in the early fall, we will explain that process.
Yeah, that would be great, because I'm just thinking of chemicals.
That is correct, yes.
Thinking of chemicals that are in the air, or possibly could have been spilt on a mattress, and I'm thinking safety and liability, which I'm sure there is a way of testing it and determining this is recyclable and this is not, but.
Yes, similar to the carpet and carpet foam, I know that they did include that in their proposal. For this specific one, I don't recall that, but we'll make sure that we address it. And the last area is residential food waste. So this is with Recycled City. And so this is a local company where what they would like to do is offer a subscription-based service to residents who are interested in recycling their food waste. And if you recall from our waste characterization study, what we found was 15% of what we find in our trash containers is actual food waste. So in our current composting program and the composting facility that we're building out, we are able to take yard waste. But by partnering with Recycled City, this will allow us an opportunity to do some testing in a pilot program in regards to residential food waste. So then, once our facility is up and going in the summer of 2016, we would like, within six months or so, to look at a residential food waste program in the city of Phoenix. But specifically, what this would do is allow residents that opportunity, but what we would like to do, even before reaching out to residents, is we would like to work with some of our sister departments, city departments, such as Fire Department, they've got fire stations, you've got the senior programs, the parks programs, convention center, we've got City Hall, our cafeteria here. Airport, yes. And looking at doing the food waste, the residential food waste, through those programs first, learning from that, see how that goes, and then opening up to residents from there. So that is the proposal there. And on that one, we're still estimating the tonnage, but from our waste characterization study, it was about 57,000 tons per year. And so those are the three proposals. Okay.
Any questions, problems? Councilwoman?
Do we plan to open it up to additional companies? Because I think when I was thinking an incubator, you have a lot of companies, and there's more synergies, and you can learn from each other when there's more there. And it sounds like Goodwill will have a significant footprint not on the campus, so there'll really just be two?
Yeah, so Chairwoman Williams and Councilwoman Gallego, for the RFP, it would be these three specific vendors. But on the CFI, that's where we have a lot of interest there, and the opportunity to work with multiple companies. And so this is our first RFP that we're doing, and we'll do, we could do additional solicitations in the fall and winter. But for this specific proposal, it was just these three firms. But you're going to see, to your question about the incubator, Chris Mackey and Gretchen Wolf will cover that area.
Okay, and so we just didn't have enough, was eight responsive, and it was, was it geography that limited us to three?
So when we reviewed the proposals, we could have worked with more than one company, but these were the strongest proposals, and we didn't feel that the others had strong business plans. So that's why we're just recommending the three at the time, at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Chairwoman and Councilmembers. We're here to just talk to you quickly about economic development and how excited we are to be part of Reimagine Phoenix, and not from the standpoint that, for the first time in my life, I get to sell garbage, but from the notoriety and the conversations that it's really starting on a national and international scale about Phoenix and the place to be for innovators, and those innovators that, to the Councilwoman's point, would be those collaborators who could create those next companies, who spin out jobs, who drive capital investments, and really change the structure and the innovative makeup of Phoenix. So would love to turn it over to Gretchen now, to kind of give you an idea of what we saw from those call for innovators. So this is what we get excited about, is those next new technologies and those next new companies that potentially are coming forward here in Phoenix. Gretchen?
Thank you, good morning. So the call for innovators was like a request for information, but turbocharged. It was only five pages. The response, the innovator profile, had only 10 questions. We wanted to, one, identify the innovators who are out there making new products out of trash, and, two, find out what it would take to either bring them to Phoenix or grow them in Phoenix. We received 118 responses from 75 organizations. And we heard from innovators not just from Phoenix and Southern Arizona, but from across the United States and across Canada, and from around the globe in places like the United Kingdom and the Netherlands. And the gentleman from the Netherlands actually confirmed this morning the web link, so he could watch this presentation and learn what we're doing here. This screen gives you a breakout among the categories. So Category 1 was for manufacturers with market-ready processes. So on the left are items that you find in the trash, and on the right are the new products that manufacturing innovators are creating from those items. Point of interest on the far bottom-right box, that's humus, not hummus.
I was just thinking that.
You don't want to eat this? Over half of the responses fell into these categories, which are the conversion technologies. And so, again, the trash items are on the left, the new products are on the right. There's overlap between what conversion technology innovators want from our trash and what innovating manufacturers want, so construction debris, green organics, food waste. Those could be inputs for manufacturing processes, but they could also be inputs for energy generation. So we've got a consultant with subject matter expertise looking at these responses. When they come back with their review, staff is going to look at these responses, as well as the responses for Category 1 together, so that we can recommend best uses for our trash. We also heard from innovators with startup technologies or emerging technologies, these are some of the ideas that they're looking to pursue. We've shared these responses with our partners at ASU. We've talked about the technology incubator, and we wanted to share this information with ASU, so that as we program that facility, we can be sure that the things we're offering, physical space and support services, match what innovators would really need to grow great ideas at our Resource Innovation Campus. Category 6 is my favorite category, because it's for everything else. So innovators who had ideas and solutions that didn't fit into any other box neatly, this was the place where they could give us their ideas. So we heard from folks who had ideas about how to do new education and awareness programs, people who would like to do a material exchange program here. We heard from folks who have new ideas about recycling programs, some for items we currently recycle, but they're proposing new ways to repurpose things like boxes and plastics. And we got ideas for items we're not currently recycling, like textiles and furniture. So staff is also looking at these responses, so that we can see where are the business opportunities that will both raise our diversion rate and create economic activity. I'll give it back to Ginger.
Okay, so that is our presentation for today, and what we'd like to do over the summer is to negotiate with the top-ranked proposals for carpeting and carpet foam, mattresses and residential food waste. As Gretchen said, we want to identify the highest and best uses for our city resources, because several of the categories, they were asking to use that same resource. We want to make sure that we're getting the best use out of it. And then we want to return in the fall to subcommittee to request recommendations for actually awarding the contracts that resulted from the RFP with the three companies that we reviewed today, as well as to issue future solicitations from the CFI process. And that's our presentation.
We do have a couple cards. John started, did you want to speak? It says, "Only if necessary," I don't know if it's necessary, or you just want to show...
All we wanted to do at Goodwill was just thank everyone for the opportunity to be part of this Reimagine group, and it has helped us as a group to be innovative ourselves, to actually look internally at what we could do better. We've traveled across the states, a few states, to look at different programs going on out there, and we're going to keep on growing and keep on doing different things that we can better our community and working with the neighborhoods here. So thank you for the opportunity from Goodwill.
Thank you very much. Greta, would you like to speak, please?
Okay, thank you, Chairman, Madam Chairman, and members of the subcommittee. I thank the group sitting at the table who made the presentation, and that we're thinking forward and new ideas for recycling and repurposing all kinds of waste, throwaways. One of the things I've been reading about in the last probably three or four years now, because I get the times, is cooperative arrangements between public and private partnerships for generating power from waste. This was originally started and tried, to the best of my knowledge, about 70 years ago, with the establishment of the TVA, Tennessee Valley Authority, and the MVA, the Mississippi Valley Authority. And in both, in both programs and areas, it worked extremely successfully, because at that time, this was in the '30s when FDR was the president, and we were in a deep The people who were being served by this had no electricity, none. It was kerosene and candles or dark. So I think because these things, a lot of them, particularly in products like mattresses and carpeting, they're made of man-made fiber largely, which is hot, as you know, if you wear it, particularly in this unforgiving climate, five months of the year. There's energy in that stuff, and I think this is something else we can look at in a very constructive way, is cooperative production of power. And it could be a source, a real source of income for the city of Phoenix and for whomever the private partner is, who will probably sell shares. That's my comment, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Gates?
Madam Chair, I couldn't agree with Greta more. I've been pushing for solar energy on city properties for many years, and we've been pretty darn successful at it. I've also been pushing for waste energy for several years, and I've been very unsuccessful at that. So my hope is that this can be the thing, couldn't agree more, Greta, that this is a thing that allows us to push forward and start to produce energy in this realm. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? No? Well, thank you, Ginger, we look forward to you coming back in the fall with all the updates, and it's really exciting, and I'm very proud of you, what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Phoenix Dial-A-Ride, Maria Hyatt.
Madam Chair, this is an item, I think, that you had requested to have an update on, or one of you at least, one or more of you had, and so this is for information today, but we really want to kind of do a broad overview of how Dial-A-Ride works, and also all of the key issues, and I'll let Maria introduce the team that's going to talk about it.
Thank you.
Members of the subcommittee, we're excited to be able to present you information on our Dial-A-Ride program. As you know, this is a critical service that we provide to our ADA community, who rely on it to get to doctor's appointments, to jobs, to entertainment, to visiting friends, and we understand that. And so we want to walk you through how the service is today, talk to you also about our next steps. So our current contract expires next summer, so we'll be talking to you about that process. And then finally, we'll talk to you about the impacts that the Transportation Initiative would have if passed by the voters, what our plans are to improve and expand our Dial-A-Ride service. Hesu Sapien, Deputy Director, will walk you through the presentation.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, thank you for having us here. As Maria said, we're here to talk about Phoenix Dial-A-Ride, which we are very proud to operate. It does provide a very key service for individuals who, due to disability, cannot ride bus or rail on a regular basis, or at all. So we'll be providing an overview of what Dial-A-Ride, how it functions, and our fleet and other operating statistics. What you see on this introductory slide is our older van on the left and our newer van on the right. That is a change we went to for several reasons, and we'll get into those details on a slide that we talked specifically about, our fleet. So as we set up, Dial-A-Ride is an origin-todestination-based service, so individuals can call from anywhere from 1 to 14 days and schedule a trip. They can also do what are called subscription trips, so if they have regular trips that happen on any given day or days on a regular basis, those can be put into the system on a subscription basis, so that Phoenix Dial-A-Ride knows that those are recurring trips. Dial-A-Ride was implemented to comply with the 1990's Americans with Disabilities Act, and what the ADA Act states is that public agencies, public transit agencies have to offer an alternative method of transportation for individuals who, due to their disability, cannot ride a bus or rail, and it has to operate in the same geographic area and the same hours of operation for bus and rail. And that's what Phoenix Dial-A-Ride and other regional Dial-A-Ride providers do. As stated in the report, in order to ride Dial-A-Ride service, we work closely with Valley Metro, and Phoenix is one of the regional providers who funds the Assessment Center, which is over at 46th Street in Washington. And what that center does is, for anyone wishing to ride Dial-A-Ride in the region, they go through an in-person assessment first, and what we have there is, there is a mock bus and rail setup, as well as a streetscape, so that staff there can work with the individual to assess what services they can or can't use. And then they let us know those individuals that are authorized to use Dial-A-Ride service, or alternatively, those individuals that have been determined to be able to ride bus and rail, because our entire bus fleet, as well as light rail, they are accessible, as you may know. We wanted to show you this map, because it shows the regional Dial-A-Ride providers in the area. There are 10, Phoenix is one of them, and one of the things that you may hear about at your offices is transfers between the systems, and I'll talk a little bit about that. One of the things that we are working with right now is, very closely with Valley Metro staff, they have implemented a Dial-A-Ride, a paratransit study is what it is, paratransit's another term for Dial-A-Ride. And what paratransit, what the paratransit study is doing is to look for commonalities and to encourage other regional Dial-A-Ride providers to establish policies that are more consistent in the region, because unfortunately, that does lead to differences in the type of services being provided in the region. Of note is, East Valley and Phoenix have a lot of similarities, and in fact, during the study participation so far, that myself and Gabriel Bias, who oversees Dial-A-Ride, have been participating in, there are a lot of commonalities between East Valley and Phoenix Dial-A-Ride, which are the majority providers in the region. Valley Metro staff has stated that there are some policies that they would like to revise to be more like Phoenix Dial-A-Ride, and those are things like package policies, wait times, things like that, that may seem simple on their face, but from a passenger perspective, may have an impact if they're different between one provider to another. One of the things that we're working with is the smaller Dial-A-Ride providers in the area that might have different policies, things such as who can qualify for Dial-A-Ride, the fares that are charged, and the service area. And just one example is, there are other regional Dial-A-Ride providers who do things like allow the general public or youth and things like that on their Dial-A-Ride systems, which may cause, you know, a few hiccups in the service or the transfers and things like that.
And Madam Chair, if the subcommittee would like more information about the study, it is another, what's the timeframe on it?
We're told it's approximately going to be, it should be wrapped up by the end of this year, early next year, and what the recommendations will be coming out is what type of policies could potentially be implemented to have consistency across the region.
So if the subcommittee would like a presentation, we'd be happy to bring Valley Metro and have a joint discussion on the study.
Good idea.
So what we have here is a map of the Dial-A-Ride service area. In its most simplistic form, the paratransit service is supposed to reflect the coverage of bus and/or rail service. So what you see here is the majority of the city, it's basically JOMAX South to the ends of the Phoenix boundaries. In the future, should bus or rail service go north of JOMAX, most likely bus service, paratransit service would reflect that same service area. So right now, we're servicing approximately 350,000 annual passenger boardings on Dial-A-Ride in a 400-square-mile service area. And what we have right now is, we have a contract with MB Transportation, which, as Maria said, expires next June. That contract is similar to our bus contract, where we, Phoenix, provide the vehicles and the fuel, and the contractor does their the fuel, and the contractor does everything else, from training, ensure ADA compliance, vehicle maintenance, washing, employee issues, things like that. They also handle the reservation system, which is operated using a software that the city provides. So in that system is everyone's information, and everyone can call in and reserve their trips, either on an individual or subscription basis, using that system.
Question. Can they do that online?
Right now, that function is not available. We have looked into systems that do that. And as a matter of fact, in our upcoming RFP, we've talked to our internal IT staff about potentially having the contractor provide that software, so that potentially, there could be more options like that. But in its current state, it, it does not have that option.
Yeah. And so who are the people who are answering those phone calls? Those are MB employees?
Correct.
Okay.
And Councilman Gates, one of the things that we heard, and I'm jumping ahead a little bit to the end, and I apologize, but one of the things we heard from the community as we were going out and talking and presenting information back to the Citizen Committee for the Future of Phoenix Transportation, was that especially our Dial-A-Ride passengers, one of the things they really wanted was technology. So the things that are kind of common on the bus side, they also want to see, rightfully so, on the Dial-A-Ride side. And so we've included technology improvements as part of our package with, for Dial-A-Ride improvements, as part of the transportation initiative.
And so just a quick overview of our fleet. It is 125 vehicles. Two-thirds of them are less than three years old. What we do is, we work closely with the FTA. Under the new guidance from the FTA, vehicles like this are, can be up to 85% federally funded. So that's what we do with a lot of our capital funds received from the FTA, is that we use them towards these vehicles. And they have multiple accessible features. The layout of the bus, the newer buses, is such that it's an improvement over the older vans, and there's more room inside for both ambulatory and individual, and ambulatory individuals, as well as individuals who use any type of wheelchair or any other type of aid. In terms of operations, we do very well in delivering the service. Almost 350,000 passenger boardings last year, four and a half million service miles. And our on-time performance tends to be in the low to mid-90s. So we think that, that's pretty good, considering one of the things that we do deal with are cancellations and what we call no-shows. No-shows are really low, it's about 6% of our total boardings, but that, or rather, reserved trips. And that is when the vehicle shows up and someone's not there. We do wait around, a call is made before that vehicle leaves a pickup point. However, that does tend to impact subsequent trips that we deal with, because we are transporting over 1,000 people a day on, on Phoenix Dial-A-Ride. The other thing we wanted to mention was a separate contract that we have with MB Transportation, which is our alternative transportation programs. These are programs that the city has offered for quite a while, and these are for those trips that might be last minute, that might have another function, or that individuals may wish to purchase taxi vouchers for, you know, just random use. The, this particular contract, also, you may recall, took place of the Reserveride program that was previously operated by the Human Services Department, and that program has been very well received. That is a taxi-based service that we've done for that program, and the feedback we've gotten back from seniors using that has been very positive. One of the things I'll mention, that's an aspect of the Senior Center Shuttle and Group Trip program, is they do have a card that they can use for their fare that's reloadable. It is a dollar per trip to and from the senior centers, or for special events that that particular senior center might schedule. But that is a function of the program that they have liked. One thing I didn't mention earlier for Dial-A-Ride, we also have a monthly pass for individuals. So instead of having to pay for each trip, Phoenix specifically offers a monthly pass, which is...
$65?
$65 a month for Dial-A-Ride users, and they can use that for unlimited Dial-A-Ride use, as well as bus and rail.
Madam Chair.
Councilman?
So on the senior cab and the ADA cab, again, that's, I think that was put into place around the time it came on the council. It's been very successful, very popular. And is that a contract, does MB contract with the cab companies? Is that how that works? Or is the city involved at all in that?
Madam Chair, Council, Councilman Gates, MB works directly with the cab companies. They don't actually enter into contracts with those cab companies, but they do work with the ones that seem most eager to provide those type of trips. And what, what we've seen as staff over the years is, there are some cab companies that are more willing, eager, and able to provide those trips. And they generally end up being automatically picked by the passenger, because they have a preference, and that individual, that individual cab company shows that they can do the trips more often, or, you know, at least at a higher level of satisfaction that the passengers like.
So Councilman, it's completely market-driven? So it, it is based on the quality of their service to the seniors? The seniors get a list, and they get to call whomever, whichever company they would like to pick. So it really goes back to the market in making sure that they are providing a quality service to our passengers.
So I guess my reaction to that, then, is if it's market-driven, then Uber and Lyft ought to be an option as well. So I don't know if anyone's thought about that.
And we can certainly look at that for the, for the next RFP.
And maybe you, could you, could you take us through which of those are required, and which of those are programs the city has voluntarily decided to implement?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Gallego, absolutely. All the programs that we've talked about so far, only Dial-A-Ride is required.
Correct.
So only, only paratransit service, which is a service that would reflect bus and rail operations for individuals who can't use those vehicles, is required by the ADA. All of these other options have been implemented over the years, either at council's request, because things like last-minute trips, or trips that have a specific purpose, like work or dialysis trips, or medical trips. Also, some of these programs have been funded through federal grants. So over the years, we've been successful in obtaining federal grants that help fund these. So that's another aspect of some of these programs, that have either grown or maintained funding because of local and/or federal matches. But everything we've talked about so far, only Dial, Phoenix Dial-A-Ride is required by the ADA.
Could you take us through work trip and dialysis trip, how we fund them? And I assume I can guess where you're going, but...
Sure. For those specifics, I'll, I'll ask Gabe Bias, who oversees the contract, to kind of walk us through what those type of trips look like.
Well, the, the work trip and dialysis trip, I'm sorry, Chairwoman Williams, Councilwoman Gallegos, the work trip and dialysis trip programs are our oldest, our older, oldest programs. Those started back in the early 1980s. And they were basically done to provide a need, that specific need, especially for dialysis trip, dialysis purposes. Those are funded through our T-2000 budget. And there are small, they started off as pilot programs to see what type of impact it would have on, on the current Dial-A-Ride service, and for the, the people that needed them. Because dialysis trips, most people who use dialysis need a, need a ride from the dial centers back to their home direct. Whereas Dial-A-Ride provides a shared ride service, so about 45% of all our rides are shared ride. So somebody who dialisized may get into a Dial-A-Ride van and have to go and pick up somebody else, where really, they need to go straight home. So that's pretty much what, what started those two programs. The senior cab program was started basically by a request by Councilman Sal De Cicio on looking at some options that we can do to provide trips to, at a, at a cheaper price than, and maybe Phoenix Dial-A-Ride provides them. And at that time, we were looking at, we had converted Dial-A-Ride to only the ADA requirement. So a lot of our senior, senior riders were, were taken off, were going to be taken off that, that program. So this was offered to them, to give them another transportation option. ADA cab came a little bit later. And all these, these are, the, both senior cab and ADA cab are, are funded by a mix of, of T-2000 funding, and also federal funding through a grant called New Freedom Grant, which provides funding for new services that are above and beyond the ADA requirements. ADA cab vouchers was, was brought on to provide same-day options for people that were ADA certified. So right now, Dial-A-Ride, you have to call one 14 days advance, but if you need a, a trip that day, that might, something might come up, ADA cab gives that, that option to those, to those people that are ADA certified. And both the senior shuttle and the senior group trips were, are their general fund, they're, they're funded through our general fund. And those were, were set up to take place of our Reserveride program.
So just to clarify too, the, especially the cab vouchers, they are provided, funded in part by Transit 2000 and federal programs, if we have funding available specifically for that. But they are, the participant pays more for that trip than they do for a Dial-A-Ride trip. So there is an offset with that convenience that is part of the passenger's portion of the payment. And would you guess the demand is, is usually for people who didn't have time to schedule a Dial-A-Ride? Is that, or is it just people who prefer to have a different balance of time versus money? Gabe, I, I believe it's, I believe it's a combination of those, Councilwoman. Some people like the convenience and are willing to pay more for it, you know, with having the direct cab, and are willing to pay the extra portion of it. Whereas others, especially for the dialysis, it is a necessity of life for them.
Both the senior cab and ADA cab are distant, pretty much distance-driven. So we, we fund up to 70% of the, of the voucher that's purchased by the individual. And individuals can purchase, purchase up to $80 a month. So a lot of it depends on, what we're seeing, they're for shorter distance trips, which allows them, their, their vouchers to go a lot, a lot further during the month. So they're both very popular programs, especially the senior cab, cab option.
I was just trying to understand with 14, I, I can't tell you that I know what I'm doing in 14 days, and so if, if maybe when we do the next RFP, I would guess with new technology, it will be easier for, you know, you can do more of the scheduling online, and so maybe they might be able to...
And of note is that it's up to 14. So you can do it one day in advance, up to 14 days in advance.
Oh, good.
So that's the way the Dial-A-Ride works, is you can do it one day in advance, or up to 14 days in advance.
Okay. So then the, I had misunderstood that the senior cab was, the demand was driven by people who didn't have time to schedule Dial-A-Ride, what it sounds like.
Sometimes it's more leisure trips, sometimes it's more, you know, last-minute day trips that they didn't have the opportunity to book at least a day in advance.
Makes good sense. And Councilwoman, that is a great segue into the next one, which is what we're considering as we prepare the new request for proposals for our Dial-A-Ride and alternative transportation systems.
So as we stated previously, the, the current Dial-A-Ride contract expires June of next year, so several public transit staff members are working internally to develop an RFP for the next contract. And part of that is learning from participation in the paratransit, the regional paratransit study, to learn what other peer agencies are doing. And so far, we've seen that a lot of peer agencies are doing what, very, very much what we're doing. Some of them are a little more convoluted in terms of zones they might implement, or distance-based fares, or adjacent community transfers, things like that. We're learning from it, but so far, from what we've learned, it looks like a lot of other large regions, like San Diego, Pennsylvania, Denver, Salt Lake, areas like that, are doing things very similar to what we're doing, with little differences in terms of who they serve and service areas and fares and things like that. So that's what we'll be doing. We'll be putting together an RFP to go out later this year, and we'll, we'll be looking to see what potential efficiencies can be incorporated into that, including any what we call overflow trips, or last-minute trips, late the day before, that might be able to be subcontracted to something like a taxi company.
The other thing I would add too, I mean, it's good to hear that you're going to be having online as, as an option as well, but being able to book using mobile devices, I think is, should also be in there as well.
And maybe GPS tracking, because it is so fabulous to know your Dial-A-Ride is on the way, or it's not? And that's exactly what, one of the things we heard very loudly from our passengers, and their family members, who want to know where they are along the way. I would think online booking would save money. Is there any reason that they couldn't implement that ahead of time?
Chairwoman Williams, Councilwoman Gallegos, we've looked, it's, it's fairly new technology, and because we have to consider the, we're not only considering that, that person that calls in, but also other passengers, so we have to accommodate multitudes of passengers, it gets a little, little, little dicey. But there is, there is technology right now, through the scheduling and routing software program that we have, a module that would allow online, if not online booking, but able to review what, what, what trips they've scheduled, and they can allow them to cancel online. And that would, that would help us out a lot, because a lot of most people like to talk to someone, or, or call in. But we do have a segment of our, of our ridership that, that does use the technology portion of it also.
And I would think, I mean, Super Shuttles developed some of their technology near here, and maybe could consult and help us as well, but I would think it would be a similar product.
And just, sorry, not to pile on, but I mean, I think seniors are used to, most seniors aren't, when they're booking airline reservations, they're not talking to a person. I mean, you know, unless they want to wait for 30 minutes with some of these airlines. I waited on, for over an hour, for a person with one of the airlines, that doesn't fly into Sky Harbor, by the way. So to give you a little hint of which one I'm talking about. And I think a lot of seniors fly that airline. So I think we need to, we need to push ourselves on this a little bit, to, to, I, I understand this is going to be an issue, we'll have some pushback, but I think we need to be looking at all the savings that we can find, so.
Chair Williams and Councilwoman Gates, you, Councilwoman Gates, you're absolutely right, and I think that will be one of the functions of the RFP. And we, we tend to do this with many of our RFPs. We ask the industry, the companies who are purported experts in these fields, what are the latest and greatest advances that are being made? Because they know that one of the things that we want to do is provide a high-performing trip at the lowest available cost, recognizing that Dial-A-Ride is a shared-trip-based service. So we're going to be looking to them to tell us, what are they seeing in the industry? What have they implemented in other regions similar to ours that we can also do here? Absolutely. And that'll be part of our evaluation process.
And Councilman, I, I think that Jesus mentioned, Dial-A-Ride is our most expensive service. So each trip costs average $40. So we always look to see how we can reduce that cost, but not at the expense of our passengers. So we're excited by the opportunity that this new request for proposals, and really hearing back from the experts on what improvements we can make.
And sorry, and I just know, at some point, it's going to be called click to ride. It's just a matter of how long that's going to be, you know? Whether it's in this RFP or the next one.
We'll have to trademark that, Councilman.
I did have a question, but I think it was answered. So in the RFP, what I would like, what I think all my colleagues would like to see is technology, modernization, who, who could provide an app, who could provide the GPS service? I mean, it's out there. It's just a matter of these companies having the infrastructure or the capacity of doing it, or investing, really. And so I would like to see that modernization happen. We're moving, we're, I mean, our seniors are moving. They're very modernized and have the ability to do it. So it's, it's more of us pushing the companies to get there, if, if they're not there.
And Chair, Chair Williams, Councilwoman Pastore, you're absolutely right. And by way of an example, one of the things that we've seen happen with our, our, our bus service contracts, is sometimes from a corporate level, they are looking to implement certain technologies, whether it be to schedule trips or monitor the trips. And what we've seen happen on at least one of our bus contracts, is that we provide the vehicles, and then afterwards, the company proposes to put something on the vehicle that helps them monitor the service better as well. So those are the type of things we'll be looking to, to evaluate with this upcoming RFP.
You know, I, I think one of the things I've always heard, and I keep complaining to Maria about, is the fact that going across city boundaries, and that's the complaint I received... I receive the most, is that seniors trying to get to a doctor or another service, it could be in the immediate area, but they have to transfer, and it becomes extremely difficult for them. I hope that you look at that as part of this process also.
Madam Chair, we continue to look at that, and part of that is part of the discussion with the RPTA and all of the regional providers on how to make that easier. I think, as we mentioned to you, and maybe we need to do a better job of talking with our passengers, our customers too, is that if we can accommodate going a mile or two versus making that transfer, we will certainly evaluate that, and we've done that on a number of occasions. Our goal is not to leave our most vulnerable someplace waiting, but when they do wait, I do need to mention that they do wait inside, in a shaded, you know, it's not out on a corner. But you are absolutely right, we need to continue that discussion and make sure that our transfers are as easy as possible, so that we don't inconvenience our passengers.
Thank you.
And we should challenge the medical community to be our partners on this. I mean, so many of the doctors that are specialists who people want to visit have a vested interest in helping us find solutions as well. But I think we also, I did want to emphasize how important this program is to many people who can say live independently with this one additional service and will be able to get around, and the savings in the long term for having people be able to stay in the homes they want to be in, it's very, very important. Could you give us just one example of a type of person who might be unable to ride a bus and need Dial-A-Ride, some of the medical disabilities? I think sometimes it's really helpful to talk about.
Not necessarily with a medical disability, just the age and the fact that in my neighborhoods, to get to a bus stop, because they are built concrete walls like this, they have to go out, and they could walk half a mile to almost a mile to get to a bus stop in the heat, and...
So, this is a lifesaver for some of your constituents?
It is, it truly is. In the summertime, well, a lot of them could not walk that far, period, so I always like to remind them to keep that in mind as they're not only doing the bus stop placements, but the services. But please answer her question, I'd maintain her up, but couldn't resist.
Chairwoman Williams, Councilwoman Gago, we, when they go, when a person goes through our Mobility Assessment Center, we look at three categories. We look at, the first category is their ability to just navigate the system, and a lot of people who have disabilities, like cognitive disabilities, people who have sensitivity to the, to the, to the, to heat maybe, that might prohibit them from having to stay out for long periods of times, can't recognize when to get off a bus stop, or even recognize to get on a bus. So, those are the kind of the disabilities that cover in that category. The second category is their ability to get onto a bus, and that comes into is that bus accessible, which 100% of our fleet is accessible. So, those are most, most of them are people like mobility, who use mobility devices to get around. Also, people with, maybe have sight impairment, have difficulty getting on a bus. And the third category is the ability to get to a bus, kind of what you were saying before, looking at their path from their house to a bus stop, does it have curb cuts? If they're in a mobility device, can they get across the street? They might not be able to get the street, or their disability might prohibit them from crossing a major street. So, those are the things that we take into consideration on the people that would be what we call qualified to use ADA paratransit or Phoenix Dial-A-Ride. There can be conditional, what we call conditional eligibility and unconditional eligibility. Conditional eligibility would probably look at, maybe see they can take some trips on fixed route, on a local bus service, or they, or on light rail, and some trips they might not be able to. And we look at unconditional, where they just can't use our light rail or the local bus service for any of their trips. So, those are the categories that we look at when they go through that mobility assessment.
Wonderful. Thank you for your work to make sure we are an inclusive city.
Did you have two?
One more slide.
Oh, one more slide, I'm sorry.
So, the last thing we want to talk about is for educational purposes only, potential Prop 104 enhancement. So, what you see on the right is the map that will go on the ballot, and that'll show improvements to bus service. And what happens is anytime you improve bus or light rail service, and what that means is extending the hours or going further, extending a route at the end, we automatically will cover that same area with Dial-A-Ride service. So, under the plan, if we start service earlier, end service later, extend the route, you know, in an area that currently isn't served, Dial-A-Ride service would automatically reflect that same area or hours of service. The other thing is the street improvements, there are several things that will be improved, including improved sidewalks, as Mr. Pius mentioned, curb cuts, things like that that would be improved over the overall street improvement plan, ADA accessibility, bus stop shade improvements, basically improving that community connectivity from a streets angle that may not exist in certain areas today.
Oh, sorry, just a question on that. So, you said that the Dial-A-Ride, so if the hours for transit in general are extended, the hours for Dial-A-Ride are extended, how about the senior and ADA cabs? Are they limited, or can they, in the times of the day, or can they just use that voucher whenever?
They can use it whenever.
Councilman Gage, yes, those vouchers can be used at any time.
So, just to follow up on that, sorry, is the other thing too, it seems to me that the senior and the ADA cab was kind of a pilot, in a way. So, I think we ought to, also, when we go out with this, we ought to look at, you know, brace yourselves, I mean, should we be in the Dial-A-Ride business? Because, as a follow-up on that, is how old the buses are? I mean, before we make the investment on that, I mean, I think we ought to be looking at that, obviously, having said that, obviously, the mobility, the accessibility is a huge issue, and if you were to kind of outsource more of this, you'd have to make sure you're working with partners who are able to address those needs. But again, if we're opening this all up, I ought to, I think that that ought to be another part of the discussion that we're looking at.
Madam Chair, Councilman Gates, you're absolutely correct, and I think Jesus said it fairly softly, but as part of the new RFP, we will be looking at hybrid models, which would, could include a taxi-based portion for the, you know, and really looking to see what are our best opportunities. And Jesus didn't mention hours of service, we did hours of service, but also frequency. So, as frequency changes on the bus, frequency changes also must be made on the Dial-A-Ride side to make sure that we're maintaining our requirements by the Federal Transit Administration. So, we would see more service, faster service for our Dial-A-Ride passengers also.
And just to clarify, because the map's a little bit hard to see here, and I know you're somewhat familiar with it, but it's for the public, so the pink lines on the map, not the purple lines, are also in a lot of District 7 and 8, and District 1 and 2, there's a lot of pink lines, which those are areas where we currently do not provide bus service, which means we're currently not providing Dial-A-Ride service to all of them.
We do.
To all the corners, are we doing?
All the way to JOMAX.
Okay, all right.
But that's not the end of the city.
Correct.
I just want to make sure that's all.
Understood.
Are there important people living north of there?
I think there's a few that still are far north.
But that also may cause some shifts as we expand the bus service to some of these areas, it may shift user rates for these other services as well, because a lot, for a lot of people, there's not a choice to get on a local bus, even if they're able to do so, so that's...
And Chair, members of the subcommittee, the other thing I wanted to note is, what the ADA requires is to do what's called a buffer around a bus or a light rail route, and we've opted not to make those case-by-case decisions. And what that means is if you have a bus route going along any particular corridor, ADA requires that you provide, for a bus service, for a bus service, for example, ADA requires that you provide paratransit service three-quarter miles on each side of that route. And so, that's another issue that's being discussed as a regional paratransit study, is the agencies that choose to do a whole area are only the three-quarter mile buffer. And to Maria's point, Phoenix has a longstanding policy that, at least right now, only up to JOMAX, we just cover the whole area. Rather than telling people you're not within the three-quarter mile area, we just provide trips everywhere south of JOMAX right now.
Thank you.
One of our quickly growing expense areas is ambulance, unreimbursed ambulance costs. Do you think that these programs help us reduce those, that maybe people might take a taxi when it's not urgent and they need to get there quickly, but maybe not with sirens on?
I haven't heard of that particular issue.
We'd be happy to talk to our contractor and see if they've got anecdotal information on that. Absolutely.
Or in emergency.
Urgent care.
Yeah. I have a question, back to the Dial-A-Ride, we own the vehicles?
Correct.
And then the RFP is to provide the service?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Pastor, that's correct. So, our Dial-A-Ride service operates similar to our bus service, where we own the vehicles and we provide the fuel, the contractor takes care of everything else, including right now for Dial-A-Ride, they lease their own facility, that's not a city-owned facility like our bus garages are, but right now, under this contract, we provide the vehicles, the fuel, and the trip scheduling software, is that it?
Also, we provide the, what we call MDT, or GPS-based computer aided dispatch system also.
That's on each vehicle.
But pretty much it's all outsourced?
Yes. The services pretty much turnkey, where the contractor hires his people what he needs to do.
So, it's kind of like Bike Share? Okay, just wondering.
Not as it currently stands, but if you approve the staff recommendation next week when I'm not here, to purchase bike racks, that would be the same thing, we would be buying equipment that is available to the public, that is, but the operation of the Bike Share program is done by a contractor.
Thank you.
But I heard that ridership's going way down very soon.
Or maybe way up, or maybe way up.
Okay. Marvin, you put in a card?
Yes, Madam Chair and fellow members of the council, there's a lot of different issues. I've been involved with this system since 1974, before Dial-A-Ride came in. I had 10 vehicles running out of my driveway on a contributory basis to get the people in my area around, and due to an accident that wasn't our fault, one of our vans was T-boned, and because of that, our insurance company decided they no longer wanted to carry us, and it put me out of business. So, I am quite familiar with the entire Dial-A-Ride system. Let me give you one bad example that happened to me just this Sunday. I got picked up at my house on 103rd Avenue, north of Camelback. I was going to go to 1501 West Bethany Home Road. The van went all the way down to Southern and 75th Avenue to pick up somebody else, then the van went from there to the ballpark to drop them off, and then take me to my appointment at 1501 West Bethany Home Road. These things do happen, but there are ways to be able to eliminate a lot of the mileage which costs the city fuel. This is just one of the examples that's going on. There is just so many glitches, some are able to be straightened out and some are not. I am for GPS in all of the vehicles, just like Glendale has. Glendale Dial-A-Ride has GPS onboard every vehicle that they have for paratransit, that not only tells the driver the quickest way to get there, but also tells the driver how to eliminate mileage. I am hopefully going to be sitting down with Maria in the near future to go over this. I am probably one of the most knowledgeable people on paratransit in the entire city of Phoenix. I helped write the ADA rules for Dial-A-Ride back in 1985. In addition to that, the center at 4,600 East Washington was my baby. I worked with David Boggs with that for several years to get it accomplished. I am all for paratransit to help people. The words that people use nowadays, which are not completely correct, is visually impaired is proper, and physically challenged is popular, that's irrelevant, it's helping the people that need the help. There are people that are on Dial-A-Ride, and I can go into it and prove it, that don't belong there, and there are people that are not on Dial-A-Ride that need to be on Dial-A-Ride. I am willing, as long as I live, I'm going to be 91 in August, to help Maria and the city. Gabe and I know each other a long, long time, we've never had a problem. Currently, I'm working on something for the city of Goodyear, and I think I finally got that problem solved, Gabe, I'd like to talk to you on that, to get Dial-A-Ride to Pebble Creek. So, I'm not only active in the city of Phoenix, I'm active in the metroplex. We did a study in 2007, 2008 for seamless Dial-A-Ride. Unfortunately, that's when our economy tanked and it died. It needs to be brought back for a seamless Dial-A-Ride, and it can be done with all this modern equipment, including trapeze. I thank you for your time today, and I am available.
Thank you, Marvin. Greta Rogers, did you want to speak? Marvin, could you pass her the microphone, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council. This is public comment, not an agenda item, correct?
Oh, well, yeah.
Okay. Have you finished your agenda item? Because I'm going to be usurped.
No, we actually have two more items on...
Well, go ahead and finish your agenda.
Oh, okay. I think we are finished with this portion, I believe, and I thank you very much, great presentation. Next is the ASCE 2015 Report Card for Arizona's Infrastructure, and I'm hoping this is Arizona and not just Phoenix.
Yes, it is. Madam Chair, subcommittee members, I don't like reporting on bad report cards, because I recall a time when I came home with straight A's, and my dad said to me, "Don't they give A pluses at your school?" However, we think we need to talk about this report card, and I don't think it has any A's on it, and it really highlights the serious nature of our infrastructure challenges at the city, but also really statewide. And it really brings home some of the reasons why we are trying to amp up our investment, not just in transportation infrastructure, but in all the infrastructure around the city and this state. It's a really, really challenging area for Arizona, which at one point was just building new infrastructure, but now we have both the challenge of building new infrastructure in growing areas, but also expansion of infrastructure to meet growth, and now replacement of aging infrastructure, which, you know, when I first started at the city, it wasn't as big a problem as it is today. So, Ray D'Avellino is going to introduce our guest and talk about this report card and what we're trying to do to deal with our pieces of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Madam Chair, and the council members here. To my right, I have Mike Woltrun, he's a member of the American Society of Civil Engineers, also was the chair of the Arizona Infrastructure Report Card. So, he's going to share with us some of the aspects of what they looked at, and this is also part of a, more of a national effort that the American Society of Civil Engineers goes through. Every three or four years, they've started since 1998, looking at largely the whole country and looking at all the infrastructure that we have. As I mentioned before in previous discussions, we, the city of Phoenix, just in street transportation, we have well over $7.1 billion worth of infrastructure needs and maintenance aspects. So, we're looking at how do we tackle that, and how do we assess and continue to assess our infrastructure? So, with that, I'm going to pass it to Mr. Woltrun to kind of go into the presentation from ASCE.
Thank you, I'm pretty, you can't hear me right? Pretty excited, we've had a lot of coverage of this ASCE Report Card, and it's been a great opportunity for me, and appreciate, grateful for you guys to have an interest in the report card. Just some background on ASCE, it's a professional organization. ASCE stands for American Society of Civil Engineers, it's one of the largest professional organizations. It's one of the largest professional organizations in, in the United States. Locally, we have probably 2,500 members, between 2,000 and 2,500 members of this organization. So the committee, you know, as engineers, we kind of feel that we're stewards of, of the infrastructure. That's kind of a lot of what we focus on as civil engineers. So that's kind of the, the impetus for the report card. And the, the committee that we put together, formed, included a variety of input from state and regional public agencies, as well as, as private consultants who work in the industry. So just as some background of what we did, you can see here on this slide, it 2015 Report Card, it was actually released in May. And, and we got, we got some, some media coverage. If you guys were up between the hours of 4:00 AM and 5:30, actually maybe 6:00, you would have maybe heard about it on the day of our release. We're pretty, we're pretty proud of that. We also had some NPR coverage down in Tucson, and then we had some newspaper coverage up in the north. So we've, we've covered the whole state, but, you know, it's, it's great to have more recognition and more, more interest in the report card. So what I wanted to do is just kind of go through comparing our report card a little bit to the national, so you have an idea of where we stand. And then also a discussion of each, each category, with the focus being, of course, on the transportation side, the transit and, and the things that interest to the committee. Overall, we, we came, came in with a C grade, and I think the national grade average was actually a D plus. So we're, we're above the national average. And that, that makes a little bit of sense. We're a little newer. We do a pretty good job in Arizona. We don't have the same kind of weather conditions that might be very detrimental to our infrastructure. So starting with our first category, we have aviation, which on a national level ranked as a D. But in Arizona, we ranked as a, as a B minus. And interestingly, there was, when I, when I spoke with the ABC 15, a lot of interest in why we were, that grade was so successful. And I, I shared about the expansion of Terminal 3, that that, that's a, that's a great thing. We have a new airport that's, that's doing well. And I think we're, we're doing well as far as aviation goes. So that, that was an area to be proud of, actually. B minus in, in perspective of a, of infrastructure report card is historically high. Doesn't mean that we couldn't afford to put more investment there, but it's just something to be proud of, relatively speaking. Now, we also have the bridges that have done well. A lot of that can be attributed to ADOT's Bridge Inspection Program. They do a great job in, identifying, you know, weaknesses and things that need to be repaired. And, and so, you know, I think a lot of, of over 8,000 bridges, only 4% are listed as structurally deficient. So, so we feel like we've done pretty well there. And I, lots of facts, and you guys have, I have some handouts that have some infographics, kind of flashy stuff. There's lots of facts actually listed in the report card, so as you look for more, it's all there. Dams, dams is an interesting area because you, you know, you'd think a place like Arizona, we don't have too many dams. But we didn't, we scored pretty well, a C minus relative to a D on a national level. Over 100, we have over 100 high hazard dams, and 35 are considered to be safety, having safety deficiencies or being unsafe. So of those over 100 dams, we, we have some challenges and things to look at. So I won't spend a lot of time on that, but, but certainly an area we can improve. Drinking water, very applicable to the city. You guys have a great water main replacement program. You're very focused on renewal of your infrastructure. Again, this is a statewide report, but, you know, the, the drinking water in the national level was a D. We coming in again above the national average, had a C minus. You have to realize a lot of our infrastructure is, is over 30 years old. And the challenge is making sure the funding's in place. An investment in our infrastructure is an investment in our economy, and an investment in safety, and investment in the future, because infrastructure costs today are going to be lower than they are in the future. So some things to consider there. Wastewater, you'll see, we got a, a C grade. The national grade again was a D. They like the D's on the national level. There's a lot of, a lot of D's. And, and, you know, a lot of this is not necessarily grading on a curve. It's looking at, we have eight categories that we look at to determine what it is, including capacity, resilience, service level, and things like that. So we have a fairly structured grading system. We found that overall, all the state wastewater plants, essentially around 75% capacity at, at 80% capacity is when you need to start actually designing new treatment plants. I know there's been a slowing, slowing in the growth in Arizona, but we, we don't anticipate that to be a long-term trend, and there's going to be definitely an increase in growth. And a part of the message that we like to share is, we need to be investing in infrastructure because, for example, and I guess the next, levies are interested, I'll, I'll hold off till levies, but, but we've seen, I mean, until we get to roads, we've seen an increase, a significant increase relative to the national growth in population and demand on our resources. And it's really emphasized in roads. But on the levy front, you know, we've actually seen millions of dollars in property damage and, and repairs that need to be made because of failing levies. So that's something that we need to work on. Again, we're ahead of the national grade. Levies, we're at a C minus national, actually, no, we're not ahead. We're, we're matching the national grade. So national grade was a C minus as well. Okay, now, let me go to the next slide. Rail, interesting. There's, there's lots of investment that can be made there. Again, the C plus grade matches what we see on a national level. We have an Arizona State Rail Plan you probably are familiar with. It shows that we need about $1.3 million in investment for freight rail, just to, just to, for improvements and, and operating costs. So on the, on the freight rail side, you know, we could improve by new routes. Both major rail routes in Arizona bypass the city of Phoenix. And they also suffer for limited trips and delay issues. So, so there's some areas directly impacting Phoenix where the major rail routes completely bypass Phoenix. We want to, we, we also looked at increasing Amtrak intercity service between Phoenix and Tucson. So a consideration in the rail front. It would require some US Department of Transportation funding potentially, or an entirely new ADOT or rail authority, which is a pretty major overhaul, but something to be considering in the future. The other area we have here is transit. On a national level, transit was a D. And locally, we're at a C plus. There's been some excellent transit improvements that have happened relative to the city of Phoenix and, and the metropolitan areas. But still, as was mentioned earlier, you have transit not accessible to all citizens, not at least easily accessible within, you know, a half mile to a quarter mile of, of their residence. And so, or within easy walking distance of where they want to be. So that's something we need to focus on. Over the next 25 years, we, there's been an estimate by ADOT, Long Range Planning, that we need to invest about $25.7 billion in our rail, I mean, our transit infrastructure. So another thing to, to look at. And lastly, roads is a very interesting topic. And I know, again, when I was speaking with the media, there was a lot of interest in Phoenix roads, you know? And in fact, specifically, they named roads where they travel and they feel there's congestion. So just, just of interest to you, and I know I've had that experience as well, there are times where I think, does construction ever stop on this road? And, but that's a good thing, because you're actually doing construction for the roads so you can improve them. But what I, what we see here is, over the next 25 years, ADOT's estimating $24 billion required just to maintain our current assets. And then another, well, let's see, as much as $193 billion for an aggressive growth strategy. This is a major area of investment that we need to be looking at. And, and this is the lowest grade in the report card, is the roads. And so something to keep in mind. It's not necessarily fully reflective of just one area, it's the entire state, as we discussed. So, but it's important that we realize, one of the statistics I like is that travel on Arizona's highways has increased by 71% between 1990 and 2013. Nationwide, that figure's only at 39%. So we've put a lot more demand on our infrastructure, and we have to be saving and preparing and investing in a way that is reflective of the demand. And so that's kind of a big part of this message, is if we want to see economic growth and continued, you know, interest in, in our, our, our growth as a, as a state and as communities, we need to invest in that infrastructure. Just anecdotally, I know my parents had come out and they were interested in moving to Arizona. So we brought them up to Anthem to show them some homes. This was several years back. And they said, "This is beautiful. You know, we're thinking we want to invest." And unfortunately, when we went back, there was traffic congestion. And all of a sudden, because of the congestion, they said, "You know, maybe we're not interested." And they didn't come. And Livia and I was like, so disappointed, because it was just a matter of a bad day. I picked a bad day to drive up there. But it, it illustrates that you can, that you can have a major impact just by one bad day. And so we want to have our service levels at a high level where we can attract investment and attract growth.
Actually, I don't think it was just one bad day.
You're right. I guess I'm trying to give you the benefit of the doubt.
It might be the hour, but.
It was a bad, it was a, I think it was like a three-day weekend when we actually happened. So that, that was a really bad day, is what I'm saying. There, there's probably lots of bad days. That was a really bad day. So I guess the, the last thing is just some, highlighting some things that we see as key, key issues. Everybody uses the infrastructure daily, so certainly it needs, it's an interest, issue of interest to all our residents, right? That they're all involved in using infrastructure. It touches everybody. And people have invested in infrastructure in the past, which has allowed us to grow. If we don't continue that investment, we can't expect to grow and even meet the needs of current residents. One thing that we recommend is leaders doing a health check of their individual communities and looking at, how are we doing as far as our capacity, as far as our resiliency and our sustainability of our infrastructure? So we're, we're recommending to all, all communities do that. The other idea is that when you borrow, when you don't save for infrastructure, you're, you're just borrowing for the future, you're going to have to pay. Eventually, you have to maintain and repair infrastructure and, and potentially replace. So planning today, it's just like financial planning for your future. You need to plan today so that you're in a position you can retire that infrastructure in the future. And it starts with sustainable choices and with innovative investments. You guys, I can see, City of Phoenix is a leader in that area, and, and I'm glad to see that. We want, we want to see resilient infrastructure that can, can meet the demands of your residents. So thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Just quickly, just showing, kind of moving ahead, you know, how do we address this? And from last week, actually, the, the capital improvement program was adopted through City Council. So moving ahead, as you can see, we've had a reduction in revenues and, as well as bonding capa, bonding capabilities for the city. So we're, we're pretty much hovering around $3 billion for a five-year program. And then how do we address this? So as, for information purpose and educational purposes, we're moving forward with the Transportation 2050. That's going to address a lot of the, the maintenance aspects that we cannot defer, key infrastructure improvements that will accommodate growth and spur economic development, kind of same, the same lines of what the report is talking about. How do we move forward in the future and plan for our future in a better way? So that, that concludes our presentation. If you have any questions, we're here to try to answer those.
It's good news that we are moving forward on this. It sounds like most of the rest of the country isn't. And so I'm glad that we've been working with the help of our Citizens Commission to try to address some of these.
Well, we thank you very much. Actually, I feel better, knowing that this is just Arizona and not Phoenix. So, yeah. I mean, a little concerned there at first. I thought, whoa, whoa. But absolutely, I think it's important that we go forward. And we, I hope you have told the legislature about this, because I think in one of the comments I read in one of those pamphlets was, you shouldn't sweep money from one fund to fund something else.
Thank you, Chair Williams. That is actually a very good point. And actually, as we rolled it out, we had two state representatives there with us. I'm going to do a similar presentation in Tucson where there will be additional state representatives. Then we're going to actually try to do a lunch on the lawn where we actually get in touch with all of the, all the, all the representatives and senators on state Capitol. Absolutely, a focus of the committee is sweeping transportation funding, which is a big issue that we see.
You know, I always think it's somewhat ironic, because every newspaper article, I don't care what it's Capital Times, Republic, or, or on TV, it's all about economic development. And, and all the efforts they're making to go nationwide and globally and whatever to recruit. And I always think, yes, but if you don't have the infrastructure and you don't put that into planning in a very high position, all those efforts are for vain. It's, it's just not going to happen, because people want to come where there's a good infrastructure. And they don't want to have to be the sole funder of it. So I think it's extremely important we continue to press forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question. Is it possible for the report to dig deeper? I know it's an Arizona report, but do you have information or data regarding Phoenix? And I'm very curious of what the report would look like with just Phoenix.
Yeah, and if, if you don't mind, Council, okay, Councilwoman Williams and Councilwoman Pastor. The, the recommendation we had was that in communities do an individual assessment of their infrastructure strength. And, and transportation, certainly, I'm sure the city has studies and they've done some work on that, so.
So just to add, you know, through the efforts that, that Mike's group does, they, they kind of canvass the, the communities and get input from the communities on what that, that aging infrastructure and, and where, where it's at. And so we provide that information, and they make the assessment of what, what it's going to be reported on the report card.
So then we're able to create with the information or the data that is presented, are we able to create then our own report card? And what I mean is aviation, I'm looking at aviation, water, wastewater, transit, even our roads?
So basically, from the data that's being collected for the report card, can it be extrapolated to get just the Phoenix portion of it?
So that's a great question. What, what that data is from is a lot of ADOT data, a lot of state-related data.
Okay.
With, with individual focus, of course, but, but not data that would be extracted from individual cities. That just wasn't part of the scope.
So then we have to create our own.
Yeah.
Got it.
But would it be fair to say from these grades, you think we should focus on roads, flood control, and drinking water?
I, I think that'd be fair to say those are great categories to focus on.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will go to South Central Light Rail Extension, Ladders of Opportunity, Ladder Step, Transportation Pilot.
Madam Chair, subcommittee members, this is our last information item for the day, and we'll be brief. Albert's going to do a presentation. The federal government has taken an interest in us once again, and this is a great opportunity to partner with federal agencies and some other folks to enhance our efforts. And the particular focus in this case is the South Central Light Rail Corridor. So Albert?
Well, thank you, Rick, and Chair Williams, members of the subcommittee. Like Rick said, this will be very brief. I know you've been sitting here for, for a little while. But really, it's, it's a great, great thing for us. Once again, the, the federal government, specifically US DOT, the Department of Transportation, has taken an interest in Phoenix and specifically identifying the, the South Central Corridor and what resources can they bring to the table to help leverage us to move forward with this corridor, and then also look at other transportation-specific light rail things that we want to do here locally. Just as a quick background, Ladders of Opportunity was something that was created out of Secretary Fox's administration and his staff. And really what that Ladders of Opportunity is about is providing reliable, safe, and affordable ways to connect individuals to jobs, education, and other essential services, which was a lot talked about during this meeting today. The ladder step is a subset of the overall bigger program of, of the Ladders of Opportunity. And really what ladder step is about is, so many times when we're going through these processes, and you all have heard this presentation from staff many of times, of when we're looking at cost effectiveness and ridership and economic development and revitalization, all of those things are very, very critical. But the one fundamental principle that they're really trying to identify now is how, through transportation and the infrastructure improvements that we are creating, how are we actually impacting the human element? How are we impacting people's lives? And that was really what helped to get Phoenix on the map, specifically this quarter, just given the, the potential that we now know that we have in this quarter and many others. So that's really what the ladder step is about. And this map really shows how Phoenix is doing very well. We are the only city west of Baton Rouge, Louisiana, that was actually selected to be one of the pilots across the entire country. It's very heavily more favored on the east coast for these pilots, but, but it does say a lot about the attention that we're getting at the federal level, not just from the federal transit administration, but from the entire Department of Transportation. So with that comes working with HUD and EPA and all of the other resources. So we think that this is a great opportunity. We're happy to be a part of the pilot, and we, we look forward to working with, with the federal government on this. Here's a map that you all have seen. Again, this is just showing the corridor of, of the South Central Futures Again, this is just showing the corridor of the South Central Future Light Rail Extension. And really, not to go through these slides rather quickly, but it's about three main things. And it's revitalizing, connect and work. And really, we're talking about revitalization. How can we affect neighborhoods? Not just about transportation, but working with neighborhood services, nonprofit organizations and creating safe environments around the infrastructure that we have. And then, of course, making sure that we're maximizing our ability to then connect people to these different destinations and/or to their house or place of work. And when we talk about work itself, it's not just about their actual employment, but education. We all know how successful our transportation system is in connecting students to get, have easy access to education. Then also about entertainment, if they're going to regular, it's ballgames or other various things. These next set of slides, I'll go through rather quickly, but it just creates a visual. It's a picture of a local neighborhood street within the corridor. But through these types of multidisciplined efforts, we're able to maybe help to make some simple changes to kind of revitalize and re-energize a local street in a neighborhood in the corridor. So here's a street that we've probably seen throughout the entire city in multiple neighborhoods. But by making simple things like we've done even on First Street, for example, the adding of sidewalks and trees, different lighting, bringing in some on-street parking, working with local neighborhoods and local groups to bring in some more options for shopping and eating, creating more spaces and adding to that. Bless you. And then, and then adding, just trying to really showing through policies that we can do and planning with between ourselves and multiple city departments and our partners at Valley Metro, how we can try to reactivate streets. And so this just creates a visual. We all hope that these things could happen as fast as I'm showing you through the click through here. But obviously, we know that it does take a little bit of time. And last but not least, I just want to leave you with that, all of what we do, whether it be in transportation or in all departments that we do within the city of Phoenix, it's always about the community. So just wanted to show you this graphic that shows this ongoing effort that we're working with the community and the community outreach, not just in the South Central Corridor, that's what we're talking about today, but for everything that we do on our light rail corridors, we're always engaging with the stakeholders, both from the residential community, the business community, schools, you name it. So we always want to make sure that we're circling back with the community and this is something that we'll keep doing on this quarter and for this pilot. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions, comments? Very enough. We thank you very much.
And then we did want to try to, all of my career, I've always made a point to never want to surprise my supervisor or my boss in this case. And you've heard that Rick's mentioned a couple of times that this is his last week. And he says it a lot more often as we getting closer to June 12th. But with that, I put something behind you there, Chairwoman. It's something that we worked with our partners.
It won't bite, right?
It won't bite, no. But really, just wanted to, and I'm going to be asking.
Waiting for this.
Howard Steer is with us here today. He's the, he's the public involvement manager from Valley Metro and our partners. And really what this is, Rick, and I'll say. So. At Valley Metro.
Thanks, Albert. Chairwoman Williams and members of the committee, we just wanted to, Valley Metro would just like to say thank you to, on behalf of Valley Metro. Rick, you've been a great asset, not just to the region, but also to the Valley Metro Rail Management Committee. I know you weren't there for very long, but many of the members really appreciated your insight and your input, but also to assist us in moving programs forward. I've worked with Rick for many years and I appreciate just the opportunity and also just the active participation in transit use as well as grid bikes. You are well-known throughout, not just the city, but in the region. And I serve on a national steering committee and your name is actually brought up on officials who actually utilize grid bikes. So I just want to say thank you and we look forward to you enjoying your next chapter and much success. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
We do have one card for public. Greta?
Thank you.
Now, is this on, Mark?
It's on.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair and members of council. Ray and Mike's presentation court feeds right into what I came here to say. As you know, as I expressed at policy when the transportation proposal was brought up, and then again, when it was passed at formal, I'm opposed to this. And I'm basically opposed to it because the amount of money is obscene and unaffordable for this metro, metropolitan city and for the state. Shortly, or two days after you passed this at formal, in The Times, there was an article, Mayor de Blasio and Assembly, and that's what they call their council, are considering and studying a proposal for $1.4 billion in the city of New York for rebuilding, tearing out and completely rebuilding the oldest subway line, which is over 100 years old And the second oldest, which is close to 100, rebuilding it, which is going to mean basically the same thing. $1.4 billion in the wealthiest city in the world. And then last week on the news, and in The Times, a feeder, filler on the news, California, San Francisco to San Diego, they're accelerated train, which Amtrak operates. They're considering a $1.8 billion proposal to improve that rail line and the effective efficiency of it. That in the wealthiest state in the country. And we're looking at four, eight times, 1.4 or close to that 1.8. We're out of our minds. This is absolutely, it's absolutely vulgar. But one thing I would like you to do at the next meeting, which I presume will be in September, I would like the results on our Transportation 2000 tax, which enabled us to have the light rail line we presently have. And I would like a full report on it, financials, how much revenue it's produced so far, what the ridership is, how it has grown or how it has leveled off or how it has dropped. I want a full analytical report on the Proposition 2000. We passed these things, and I voted for that. And we pass these things, but we never hear anything after it's passed. We don't know what's going on. And we are owed that by the representatives we elect to the council and the mayor's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Greta. I just want to take this opportunity, since this is our last meeting, to thank you. You have been a real asset to me. You've been my teacher. You've been the cattle prod to keep me moving in certain directions and you've also had the whip out to slow me down. But you've always been very supportive and easy to understand, reasonable and very honest with me. And that is greatly appreciated. You just don't know how much I appreciate it. Besides that, you've always been a lot of fun. And you've always kept secrets very well. So you're not going to write a book, I take it? Okay, then our friendship can go on forever. But really, truly, thank you for doing so much for this city and so much for transportation and the infrastructure. You have been a leader in Phoenix, the Valley and the nation, so you are deeply appreciated. So, thank you.
Wanted to say thank you as well for being on this committee, a great asset for making sure Phoenix plans long-term and really considers all options. And, and we've had so many days when it's been Rick Namark Day at the council where we have 10 different complicated things and you managed to juggle them all. So if you can pass on the secret, we are all in need of that. And also really appreciate you trying to listen to each of our individual perspectives and what we're hoping to accomplish because I know with nine people going in different directions, that cannot be easy, but very much appreciated that you've tried to do it. And apparently, you're also excellent at CPR. I don't remember when you rescued me when I passed out at the mayor's office, but I'm told you did it with great skill. And I apparently, I'm not the only person at the city who's also benefited from Rick Namark first aid. So on many levels, thank you.
Go.
Yeah, I would just echo all those, those comments. Rick, you know, you are the, you're never intimidated by the complexity of an issue. And in this time, you know, that we're living through right now as a city, as a country, we need people like you. You're going to be greatly missed. And I agree with the comment too, you're always a lot of fun. You make it fun because, just because we're dealing with serious issues and complex issues, it doesn't mean that we can't have fun and have a laugh. And so your levity and your sense of humor has helped greatly. And whoever you're headed, they're very lucky to have you joining their team and you're going to be greatly missed.
I'll catch you tomorrow, so thank you.
Let me just say thank you to the committee. This has been a fantastic subcommittee. I don't know how I got this plum assignment, but I'm glad I did. And I'll tell you that, you know, my, anything I've been able to do, particularly in this area, that's very highly technical, I really owe a lot to a lot of great staff people, many of whom are in the room and some of whom are not in the room, and great bosses who have given me the freedom to work on very interesting subject matters and willing to let me take risks and sometimes fail. And it's extremely helpful to have quality staff teams and people who are willing to work together to solve complicated community problems. And the last thing is just the community itself. I mean, the people that we get to work with, some of whom are in the audience today, but many of whom, over 29 years, I had the opportunity to work with, their input and their trust in us means a lot as well. So thank you, thank you so much.
Any other items for the future, other than what we have the list, I think?
I would actually love to get an update on rail, including commuter rail. I think we may have a busy first meeting, but maybe sometime in the fall.
Okay, in the fall? All right. Very good.
Madam Chair, I would agree with the suggestion from Ms. Rogers that it'd be good to have an update on the T2000 revenue collections and the like.
Very good. Nothing else, the meeting is adjourned.